I'd like to call to order the second public hearing, July 29th, 2025. If Commissioner Cooper would lead us all in the pledge to the flag, please.
My pledge to lead is to flag of the United States of America. I am a true patriot of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, but limited to the just God's law.
Madam Chair, I'm going to read a preface for our hearing this evening. I just wanted to make sure that we have this on record. The Board of Commissioners has the legal authority and responsibility to set the county's millage rate, which funds the county operations, services, and departments such as public safety, roads, parks, and general county administration. During this millage rate hearing, the board is specifically addressing the county's portion of the property tax bill. Please note, the Newton County school system operates as a separate governmental entity with its own elected school board members. The Board of Commissioners cannot increase, decrease, or otherwise influence the school system's tax rate during BOC meetings or county millage rate hearings. The Newton County School Board has the exclusive authority to set the school district's millage rate to fund educational operations, which is approximately 59% currently in 2025. This includes school taxes that impact our seniors. When property owners have concerns about school taxes, those issues must be directed to their elected school board officials at the Board of Education meetings, not county commissioners, because the Board of Commissioners has no jurisdiction over school taxes. There is a packet located on the table when you enter the boardroom that explains when and where the Board of Education meetings are held. This meeting is not to address Newton County school taxes and their respective millage rates. It is only to provide an update on the county's millage rate.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Ms. Brittany White, our Finance Director.
Good evening. First, we'll start off with a slide that shows a brief recap of the need for the millage rate increase for the FY '26 budget. And then we will read the notice of property tax increase into record, and then we will open it up for a public hearing. So as a recap here, the millage rate that we are advertising is supporting the budget, the FY '26 budget that was adopted on June 17th of 2025. And below lists the major increases that totaled to $8.7 million in an increase in the FY '26 budget. And those items are $3.7 million for the comp and class study for salary increases, $1.5 million for the health insurance increase, as the county's health insurance increased 14% this year, an increase of $1,750,000 for contingency for new positions. A majority of these positions are needed for facilities added by the SPOLOX projects, as well as Public Works mowing and litter crews, $1 million for Public Works bridge repairs, and $750,000 for the Public Works culvert replacements. And then now we'll go into reading our tax increase statement into record. Newton County has tentatively adopted a millage rate which will require in property taxes to increase by 10.31%. This tentative increase will result in a millage rate of 8.567 mils, an increase of 0.801 mils. Without this tentative tax increase, the millage rate will be no more than 7.766 mils. The proposed tax increase for a home with a fair market value of $325,000 is approximately $100.93. And the proposed tax increase for a non-Homestead property with a fair market value of $300,000 is approximately $96.12. There are three public hearings that will be required. This is the second public hearing. The first public hearing was held this morning at 11:00 a.m., and the third public hearing will be held on August 5th at 6:30 p.m. And that concludes the tax increase statement, and we can go ahead and open it up to public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, each person will be allotted three minutes on the timer. Once the timer has ended, we will ask the next person to come forward. If you would like to come forward and speak to the millage rate hearing and the numbers, you may do so at this time. Please provide your name and your address for the record, please.
Dennis Taylor. We have two houses, one in District 1, one in District 5 now. I'm not coming up here to bash the millage rate. I'd be a hypocrite if I did. After y'all pass, let the voters' voice be heard in the tax bill. So that's not what I'm here for. I don't like this budget. I think you could have done a lot better, but you've had no stability in the top two positions in this county, and you need that to drive a good budget. I know that. I spent 35 years in management for two good companies. Starting when I was 19 years old with Millican, I was rated A+ every year except the first one. And they only had 1%. Across town, I was rated AA every year. So I know something about management. Also, the biggest tax problem in this county is school board, as was explained. It's not here, school board and tax assessments. This board has no control over the school board, has limited control over tax assessments. We have more control over tax assessments if we do it. We can appeal, and if you appeal your tax assessments, all the way to the board, by law, they cannot be increased for two years. That's the law. So we can control that. We can also control it by what Fulton County is doing, class action against tax assessments. So we got more ways to control that than y'all do. But I want to talk about, there's a lot of talk about big new bill in your first meeting. That's why I'm here. Since 1972, me and others have pushed to eliminate taxes on overtime. Because where I worked at, you couldn't shut stuff down. It was too costly or it sold out. So we've been pushing that. A lot of them have died. We caught others on to. We finally got somebody to listen. So your county employees, temporarily at least, will not be paying tax on overtime. But we're not finished. We're going to make it permanent. You should never tax people's overtime pay when you go out there like I did and had to beg them, make them work overtime, and stay away from their families.
Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry, you have three minutes. Would you give us your address for the record?
Well, which one you want?
Well, the one you live in, I guess.
I live in both of them. 575 Ellington Road, 385 Langs Road.
Did you get that?
I live in both of them part-time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. Elena Sanders. I had an opportunity to review the actual document. I did an open records about two days ago and received the actual surplus for the past two years. And Newton County actually received almost $12 million more than last year for a surplus. We also have $60 million that's still sitting here. And also, if you remember last year, that we mysteriously found $6 million? Now you tell me if that's fiscal responsibility. Now, we constantly keep talking about 2008 and 2016. Back then, we were at 13 mils. But guess what happened during that time? We were in a recession. We had a deficit. So of course you want to increase the millage rate to make sure the funding is coming into the county. And also, we had a population of 98,000 people. Right now, in 2025, we have 125,000 people, which is almost pushing on the 140,000 people mark, because everybody doesn't do the census. So we have almost 140,000 people here in Newton. We have houses that have been built, and more people who are in here paying property taxes. Now, one of the things that I do see is that we are not decreasing the amount that we're paying to the authorities. You went and moved the Solid Waste Authority from up under the county, but we still are paying for them. As well as in 2024, I was the one who asked the question, can the Solid Waste Authority operate on their own by an actual auditor that we paid for? And that auditor said right standing here that the Solid Waste Authority can operate on their own. You're paying thousands of dollars to the IDA Board for economic development, but what economic development have we seen to satisfy the residents of Newton County? Majority of the tax and sales base is going into the surrounding counties of Newton. So who jives to make sure economic development happens within this county? This board is sitting right in front of me. So if the JDA and IDA is not providing what we need, then cut their budget and make them come before the people to provide what we need, so that sales tax base can come here in Newton County. There's many things that this board can actually do, but we don't want to do it. If you look at the numbers, take the time and get that same document I got from the Finance Director, you would see that we made almost $139 million in a surplus this year. Based on those numbers, if you know finance and you look at it in detail like I do, those numbers say that we should not be increasing taxes. But guess what? You just want to. Thank you.
Please don't have any outbursts, please. Next person.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angela Touchstone. I live at 675 Pebble Boulevard. I wanted to speak today. I do appreciate the county services, especially our Newton County Sheriff's Department. They are highly visible, and I know they do a lot in the community. I'm a newer resident to Newton County, so still trying to figure out the politics and everything here. But one thing I don't see with all these houses that are going up is what are the people supposed to do? There is no recreation, no entertainment, nothing for our youth to engage them on a day-to-day basis. So that tells me I can expect idle minds and an increase in crime in my community, which doesn't make me want to stay in the community. If you're going to build houses and increase taxes and not bring anything to attract businesses and to attract recreation, then why are we paying higher taxes? Because the average citizen myself, we don't just get salary increases when we want them. We don't just get, you know, the insurance goes up. My health insurance is going up again. I have to pay that. And I'm not saying that the county employees should not have fair wages or health insurance, but what is it doing for our community in return if we're giving more and more and more, and we're not seeing the fruits of our benefits that we're paying in? That is all.
Please don't have any more outbursts. Thank you.
John Dobbs, I live on Drive Farm Road. I know the sheriff has come in here and said he needed more money to put more deputies out on the street. Because all sheriffs do that. I work for the Cav Sheriff's Office. Our sheriff was good about that. But in Newton County, if the sheriff needs more money to put more deputies out on the street, why don't you ask him to pull the deputies that are in the high schools out of the high schools? Because the school board has their own police department. They're paying double security in high school. And trash pickup, one of the things y'all had posted up here on the little board up here, costing so much money for trash pickup. Well, when I worked for the Cav, we had inmate road crew to go out and pick up trash. If they didn't pick up trash that day, then they cut the parks, the county parks. They can do that. So look at the money that you're spending and giving to the sheriff to put more deputies out on the street and ask, why don't y'all go and ask the school board, what are y'all doing with y'all's police department? Where are y'all standing? Because evidently, the sheriff don't mind? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening, board. I would just like to say-
Name and address.
Linda Lackey, 35 Scotts Ridge Drive.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, are we even considering the seniors around here? We're struggling. Inflation is high. Why would y'all raise property taxes like that at a time like this? I have a husband at home sick with stage four prostate cancer. We have to pay for his injections. Now we got to worry about whether we're going to be able to keep our homes that we've worked really, really hard to have. Like, and then the school is separate. Why is that? Why do the school get so much money from us, the taxpayers? I live between two schools, Hurd-Mixie and Covey. So mine is really, really high, $500 and $600 at a time. That's too much, and something needs to be done about it. We vote you guys in to help us, the taxpayers, but y'all are not helping us. And it's not fair for the seniors. They can barely buy groceries, pay their bills, gas, car insurance. It's a whole lot that it takes to run a house outside of taxes that y'all are increasing. Give us some money. All this surplus, all these millions, give it back to the taxpayer. We paid it. Let's be fair. And the percentage that y'all are going up is way too high. 10.31%, that's a lot in an economy like this. We're struggling. And I'm speaking for my household with a sick husband with stage four prostate cancer, no cure. How are we going to eat? How are we going to buy his injections twice a year? The medication's like $2,000 or more. Cold pay is like $700. How are we going to pay higher property taxes when we're trying to keep him alive? So please, reassess these numbers. And if we got a surplus, take it out of there. Increase the health insurance, the pay increase, take it out of there. Use the money y'all already have instead of digging in our pockets for more. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing this time. We now have comments from the Commissioners. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say our surplus is not 139 million, nowhere close. Our unencumbered surplus is around 60 million. Well, it's recommended by auditors that we keep about that much in savings. I call it savings. You know, one for our bond ratings, two for emergency situations, and three for operating cash at the beginning of the fiscal year. We'd have to borrow the money at the beginning of the fiscal year if we didn't have that surplus. So the other part of that 139 million, I think it's accurate to say that is encumbered money for the most part, already obligated. So, and I want people to understand, and I heard the school talk again, we have zero to do with the school taxes, zero. Nothing we can do about them. We got a sheet of paper, I think, out here that shows exactly where you can go to talk to a school board member or go before the school board. They gets tired, real tired. I pay the taxes just like you do. This is a, and I have to cut back in my household to pay my taxes and my insurance and all the other expenses. So, but let me tell you, this hearing tonight is a formality. The budget was put in place a month and a half ago. We worked out the budget, hammered out the budget through blood, sweat, and tears behind closed doors, in public meetings, a while back. So tonight is just a formality to have a hearing, and then we'll have a vote, I guess, Tuesday night on the finalization. But the millage rate was put in place a month and a half ago. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that the Commissioners that sit up here are paying these same taxes. And it's tough on us, too. So I don't want to, I want to be empathetic. So I don't want you to think I'm not being that way, but it's, we have, behind the closed door meetings that we could have, that we weren't a, at least three Commissioners, a couple of us at a time met with James and Brittany, and we cut, and we cut, and we cut, and we cut. And I don't want to belabor the point, but 8.7 million was already up here on the screen a while ago, was new spending. And I'll cover them one more time. I will belabor the point. 3.7 for a comp and class salary increase. Turnover in employees costs you twi-, I've worked in HR. Employee turnover costs you about twice as much as if you can get benefits and salaries to keep your employees in place. That turnover is very, very costly. 1.5 million in health insurance increase, beyond our control. And if we want our employees to have good health insurance, we have to pay it. 1.75 million in new contingency positions for SPOLOX projects. Those are projects that we all voted yes on three or four years, well, for the last, as long as SPOLOX has been going on, right? So those projects have got to be put in, those projects had to be put in place, and now they have to be staffed, because we voted yes for them. Now they have to be staffed, and we got to pay to put the staff in there. 1 million for Public Works bridge repair, 750,000 for Public Works culvert replacements. And in our earlier public hearing this morning, someone stated they don't see their tax dollars at work. We have L-MIG projects listed on our website that shows you what streets and roads are being paved year by year. They all can't be paved every single year. And I'll note one more time, I live on a dirt road myself. So I just wanted to put some of those things out there so that the public can understand. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if, and I just want to bring back to the attention to our residents, back in 2022, there was a referendum placed on the ballot stating that there was a House Bill 581, which was a property tax relief and reform for Georgians. Over 60-plus percent of our residents here in Newton County stated that they wanted that House Bill 581 in place to actually lock in that 4% rate. So if your home values increased, it'll stay locked at that 4%. And so what this board did, we opted in to basically say, hey, if this is what our residents want, we want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to help provide a level of relief. In addition to that, and I will continue to say this over and over again, when I came on the board back in 2019, we were at 13.44%. We have done our best every year to take a complete rollback or a partial rollback. So we've gone from 2019 to 13.4 millage rate down to an 8.2 millage rate. And so this increase is from 8.2 to 8.6. Initially, the proposed was 10 mils. When our Finance Director, County Manager came back to us, originally it was 10 mils. And so this board-
13.
Was it 13? Okay, 13 mils. I remember 10. And so this board has worked collectively together to try to get it from 13 mils down to 8.6 mils. So that shows you that this board is doing their work to try to provide a form of relief for our residents. When we, when this board receives the monies from our Tax Commissioners' office, and we get those monies, we have to make sure that we have deputies on the road, we pay our Sheriff's Department, we pay our Judicial Center, we pay our Tax Commissioners' Office, you know, we pay roads, bridges. So a lot of the monies that you see that we incur, we're putting it back out. Our State Association says that we should have at least three months worth of savings set aside. And so that's a minimum. Now, of course, we have six months, and so that's what we should have to basically make sure that if anything happens, if anything occurs like COVID-19, when COVID hit, we had to take some of those funds and basically make sure that we take care of those things. And so it's always good to have a healthy savings. We don't want to be below that. And so we're trying to make sure that if anything happens, we can take care and cover those costs and cover those things. So it's not this board's intention to try to increase taxes. We want to make sure that the services that you deserve as a taxpayer, that we're doing our best to do that. We don't want trash on the roads. We want to be able to pay people to be able to pick that up. Those are things that, the monies that we incur, we're providing those services to the residents. And so I just wanted to make sure that you all understand that it's not the will of this board to try to incur or to increase taxes. We're trying to do our best. So as you can see, we have went to 8.6 mils where it was originally 13. So we've done our behind-the-scenes work to try to make sure that we get that down as much as we possibly can by still providing you with the services that you deserve as taxpayers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
Well, I'm not going, I'm kind of echoing both of what the two previous Commissioners are saying, but I do encourage that we do make sure we go to the school board meetings and just as well as come to the meeting here, and look and see what they're doing as well. Just make sure we do that. And also, keep in mind that we ask for different things. We also have to remember that there's going to be a cost. So we have to be mindful of that as well, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I've been up here for a while, and I think, and I have drawn a little bit of criticism because I didn't support the budget. And they said, well, you always up here, you don't support it. I could not go along with a budget when, I'm out here with the people. I'm out here with the seniors. I'm out here with the kids. You got Communism closed down, you get the sheriff budget and his cut, some of his stuff is cut, and I was supporting the budget increase, a tax increase on the citizens. No way. I couldn't do it. In fact, you know, I kept entertaining just the thought of it, and I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it. Because I understand, you know how much it costs. I knew about prostate cancer, because I was diagnosed with stage five prostate cancer. In fact, I had called my people together in my house and said, look here, I'm not going to be in it long, but I'm just going to try to. But I didn't run around and tell everybody my business, because I didn't want nobody for me to feel sorry for me so I could maintain my life. But glory be to God, about three months ago, they told me I was cancer-free. Amen. So I believe in faith, and I'm going to just say this, you know, during election time, some people would tell you anything, say we can't spend no more than what we have. You know, during leisure time, some people would tell you anything, say, we can't spend no more than what we have. Do it when you sit up here. And that's our budget, our budget at home. I can't spend ten dollars and I don't have a three. But it's easier, and I get criticism of this, it's easier to spend your money the way I want to spend it than I would spend my own. And I don't think nobody up here would, would do a tax increase in their, in their citizen or their parents or, or their friends was, or suffering like the ones that I know. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Long?
It's kind of disappointing to hear a Commissioner say that we didn't bust our butts to try to get this budget down because we did. There was three of us that were in here just about every other day for four and five weeks doing it. And, you know, my ambition was to not have any increase whatsoever. And I think I said that during the budget hearings. I'm extremely fiscal with the, the money. And I was like, no, 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 no. And we cut, 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 cut until everybody was squealing and yelling and everything else about what we were cutting. So I, I totally agree. I did not want to go up to eight point six. I wanted to stay exactly where we were. But that wasn't feasible. And the reason why is because some of these, these projects that they had to list up were eating up the money. We have a new senior center that's getting ready to open on the other side, on the western end of the county. We have to have people to run it. I was kind of joking and said, why can't we just share people and let them help the other side? You know, because the people will be going to the other one. You know, they laughed at me and said, no, Leanne, it's not gonna work like that. So I was trying to come up with any idea we could. So to sit here and say that Commissioners are, are spending money differently, that, that's crap. Because I worry about every dime that gets spent here. In fact, they probably can't stand me because I ask so many questions. Brittany and I were on the phone today with each other. So I think that that's important. SPOLOX projects to me, they're pork projects to me. I don't like that list. I want to go back and have the voters re-vote on it. We have so much crap on that list, it's gonna cost us a fortune. I said during the budget hearings that we could be like Rockdale and have all the things for everybody to do and be at eighteen mills. Eighteen mills. That's what Rockdale County is. We're at eight point six. So let's put that in perspective. People want to throw out numbers and change everything around, like make it, you know, for their narrative. That's a huge number. DeKalb County, twenty-two mills. Walton County, ten point five mills. So Newton County is very low. And our industrial development and economic development that we have in this county has helped us offset some of that from the taxpayers. The big thing here that everybody needs to look at is your property value has gone up so much. Real estate is just through the roof. And most of you know that if you've ever looked at, uh, real estate or gone on any kind of app, it's through the roof. And that's what's driving up. The value of your property is driving up the taxes. I did a little thing after the meeting this morning and I looked at my actual property tax bill from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-four, and my property went up thirty-six percent in that timeframe, so three years. But my, what I paid extra in taxes in Newton County for that timeframe was five hundred and forty-eight dollars for all those years, accumulative. So I want to, I want people to really look at the real numbers. Don't go by what people are telling you. You have to get down and dig it in. It's very complicated to figure out a millage rate. If you've ever tried, it's not, it's not easy. But I'm happy to teach somebody if they want to see it. But it's important for us to understand, everybody comes up and yells at a Commissioner about, fix my road, fix this. I want a park. I want this. I want that. We know everybody does, but we can't afford all that. So we are cutting the budget. We are trying to do everything we can, but give you the necessities that you need and any extras that we can do through SPOLOX. And that's something, that's how you have to raise money in government. There are, there are fifteen counties that do not have any taxes on seniors, period. We would love to be one of those. If you look at the list, all of them are extremely large counties with high population, except for Gilmore County. And I don't know anything about Gilmore County, so. I don't know, that seems like a small county to me, but that's another one that doesn't have it. It seems like a very poor county. So I want you to understand that we will get there. We're trying. I want to have seniors, we talked to the tax commissioner about having the seniors, the, the income changed. So you can make decent money and be able to get your exemptions for a senior. That's something we gotta start there. Thank you all for coming too.
Thank you.
And what Commissioner Long said, she said there were three Commissioners meeting. Were you, were y'all meeting behind closed doors? Because if y'all were, this constitutes a quorum. And we have a quorum, you're supposed to advertise those meetings.
We did not meet together. Never, never a quorum. Don't even try that. We know, we know the rules.
I have a motion to adjourn. Did you get that? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Thank you for coming.